Okay with everybody?
Yep. Okay.
And did I understand that Jennifer has joined the meeting, is joining the meeting?
She's not on yet, but if she is, I will keep a lookout for her.
Okay.
We are live.
Okay, good evening. It's the January 20th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I'll begin by calling roll. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth DeLeo.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford, I know is absent. Leah McGovern. Leah, hello, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
Here. Okay. Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here, and Guthrie are note taker, and I believe Andy Port and Caitlin Sullivan from the Planning Board are here, from the Planning Officer here. I'll go through the agenda. And then we'll go back and hit each of the items. Public hearing scheduled for one, 93 State Street, three different applications for the Institution for Savings. They will be, they have requested a continuance. Other business, 32 Union Street, request for release of a covenant. Approval of minutes from our last meeting. Potential zoning amendments and updates. So we'll begin with the Institution for Savings. I'll take a motion to continue that to February 17th.
I'll make that motion, Rick.
I'll second it, MJ.
And MJ seconds. Any discussion? All right, I'll take roll call on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Beth?
Yes, sorry.
Anne?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ? Yes. Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So we'll see them on the 17th of February. Other business, 32 Union Street, the request for a covenant. I know that there, there's meant to be a representative from the applicant here, but Andy, is there any reason to call on him?
I'll leave it to you, Chair. In our opinion, the office's opinion, the request is pretty straightforward. It's a request for return of funds or the covenant, release of the covenant on the relatively small subdivision that happened over between Union and Beacon. If you've been seeing that project, it's hard to miss. You know, it seems to have come out very nicely. And there's just a few remaining loose ends as far as landscaping. So in this instance, the office has no objection to the request. And we recommend the board approve, but, but I think we have John Gorman here if there's other questions for the request.
Anybody have any questions? Everything seems to be in order. I saw the letter and the agreements with 32 Union and seven are beacon owners are either signed or in progress. So that looks like it's under control. I would say it's safe to take a motion to approve the request for a release of covenant. Could I have a motion?
So moved, Dan.
Thank you, Anne, and a second.
A second, Alden.
Thank you, Alden, and I'll take roll call for this. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes for January 6th. I'll take a motion in a second and then see if there are any significant edits that anyone would like to propose. So we have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Alden? Second, Rick.
Any significant edits anyone would like to discuss, please?
This is Dawn. I did send Linda with a copy to Rick and I believe you, Bonnie, with just one small change.
Okay, I've sent in some minor edits. I think Seth and Rick have as well. Do either of you think there's anything that you put in there that needs board review?
Nothing substantive.
No, I didn't think so. Okay, so let's take a roll call on this for approval of the minutes. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ? Yes. Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Minutes are approved. Under potential zoning amendments, I'll include in that just one update on the on the Planning Priorities Subcommittee, or whatever they're called. Caitlin has said that she will arrange a meeting with Beth and Tanya and other members of staff in another month or so when Tanya was, is available to look at Planning Board procedures, which was on that list. We'll just leave that there and let them take care of it and bring it back to us. The other, the committee itself will be meeting on Zoom on Monday to go over any research and maybe we'll come up with our list of priorities by some, or at least suggested priorities for the Planning Board so that we can bring that back to you at the next meeting. Don't know how quickly we're gonna do it. It's a rather convoluted, difficult thing to sort of get our heads around. So we're gonna see what that meeting brings up. Alden, or Anne, or Rick? Do you have any other encouragement for people on where we're going with this?
I don't think so. We went through all of our priorities at the last meeting and I think we've got a good list started. Right.
Okay, so we'll noodle through that on Monday. And the other thing I saw just beef earlier this evening, and Andy, I don't know if there's anything you need to say about it. Thank you for getting Counselor Shand on board with sponsoring our revised Section 6C. And I believe you submitted that for inclusion in the next City Council packet. Is there anything you'd like to say about it?
No, thank you, Chair. Correct. So that's in the packet for the council. We'll do our usual scheduling through the chairs of the Planning and Development Committee, which is still Heather Shand, although there has been a change of membership of the Planning and Development Committee. Heather's still the chair, so we'll coordinate between Bonnie and Heather on a date that works for the hearing.
Could you, that's a good point. Could you update us on who's on the Planning and Development Committee now?
Yeah, so Jared Argamond is Council President, but he's also back on the Planning and Development Committee. Heather Shand is the Chair, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe Counselor Wallace is still the third member.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah. Good. So those are the three committee members we'll be working more closely with. Anything else for update?
Yeah, so there's a piece that I have been working on with Jennifer and with Jared. Unfortunately, it was not something I could complete this week. But it's a, basically what we're doing is packaging up some housekeeping changes that Jennifer and Jared had been discussing with some of the language improvements from our zoning rewrite project while we're touching the definitions, the use regulations and dimensional controls. I have to have a discussion with the two of them over the, you know, we're trying to do basically a housekeeping update that will deal with some of the clarifications we were looking for from the zoning rewrite in those sections, parsing out like we've discussed, I think at a prior meeting, chunks that we can do at a time. The one thing I would note from the zoning rewrite that we talked about before that may not be part of that package now, because it's a more substantive change, would be the breaking down the R2 district and the two sub-districts. So the time, the discussion we had had was mainly about bringing forward better language for some of the provisions in the zoning to deal with loopholes or vague language and so forth. But the policy level question of breaking down the R2 district would be a separate thing for some future amendment. And then the intent after that, you know, through the remainder of the year is to, to the extent the Planning Board and Council have bandwidth for it, I know COVID's an unusual time, but to the extent there's bandwidth for it, and not knowing where short-term rent units will go, to basically bring forward packages every couple of months, bring forward another chunk of zoning updates from this rewrite project and other things that folks have been pointing out more recently. So as Jennifer has been in the zoning administrator position, you know, looking at the language in different sections, realizing that certain tweaks might be appropriate or helpful. And those things happen all the time in different places. We don't always discuss those all before the Planning Board. But sometimes there's debates over different provisions that the ZBA has to handle on appeal or you know, permit relief. So we're talking about cleaning up some language like that and capturing some of the cleanup that we worked on the zoning rewrite. And then moving on to other chapters or sections, but trying to give us some of the cleanup issues. And perhaps if, if certain sections like the breakdown of the R2 are, say, similar to the short-term rental units ordinance where it might be, you know, held up for months of debate, trying to get some of those improvements done while we also deal with substance for potential substance of changes like short-term rent units or other things like that.
So just for clarification, something like that, once it's submitted to City Council, does that go to Planning Development for a joint public hearing, just like other zoning amendments?
That's correct. Yes, correct. And actually, what I would like to do is pending my discussion with Jennifer and with Counselor Argamond about the content of that, and obviously I think it would make sense to pull in Heather as the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee to just circle back with both the Planning Board and our membership on the zoning advisory committee, obviously, take a look at an update of that, but circling back with those folks for their thoughts on that, that particular update. Again, it's been a while. There was sort of, sort of pause with COVID about, you know, bringing forward zoning changes. It was the end of the year. We talked about short-term rent units and not really being sure when that's going to be taken up again, or to what degree. We thought maybe we'd start moving ahead with other pieces, and that's why, for instance, the 6C piece is going to the council now. As we go into the new year, hoping that the bandwidth, you know, remains there as the council deals with budgets and other things in the spring to deal with future code amendments. You know, these things do take a while, unfortunately, of a lot of process. But you know, the data will be a better language in the ordinance. So we'd like to continue some of the efforts that have been done in different sections. Some of them, you know, the administrative section is another piece that I'm working on that would be brought forward this spring to clean up some of the language in that section to sort of deal with some of the, the practical realities of what we, how we do things now that aren't quite explicitly captured in that section or very well captured in that section. It's just somewhat antiquated because it was written originally for just the zoning board appeals, for instance.
Any other questions on this for Andy?
Yeah, I have a question, Andy, on the licensing aspects of short-term rentals. Is that being reviewed by the City Council's Licensing Subcommittee?
It is actually, and the council will have to decide if it's going to change the makeup of that group. That's a good question, whether or not they're gonna change the composition, but it has been reviewed both by the Planning Development Committee and that particular section or the Licensing Commission's role by the Licensing Committee of the City Council. That committee, I think, as I understood it, was not able to schedule any meetings, you know, in 2020 for this particular set of amendments and which are somewhat related. So we're hopeful that some progress will be made on that with the Chair of the License and Permits Committee. And Heather, as Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, I know was interested in trying to move that process forward. So hopefully, you know, in the coming months, there'll be agreement to schedule some of those. I think there was some concern by the Chair of the Licensing Commission, a License Committee Chair about having, you know, real-time meetings as opposed to online meetings for something like that. But we don't know how long that will be until we're able to do that. So if we're gonna make progress on short-term rent units as a regulation, we'll probably wanna dispense with the, the idea of having a physical meeting in the next couple of months, because that's not likely. But so I think that's where it stands right now. We did receive feedback from the Licensing Commission through their Chair, Craig Holt. So we have at least some degree of feedback from the License Commission or the Commission Charities on the components, but that committee did not really do any discussion, unlike the Planning Board and City Council Planning Development Committee that discussed the zoning amendment.
And what is the makeup of the Licensing Subcommittee?
Let me just pull it up for you right now. I apologize, because I, we just got this new list this last week, so I apologize. Let me just pull that for you.
Charlie Taunter? I don't know if that's changed.
Okay, so the, on the Licenses and Permits Committee, Joe Devlin is Chair. He was Chair of the last session, so he's Chair of this session. And Charlie Taunter and Bruce, or no, sorry, Byron Lane are the other two members of that committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Andy, could you send all of us a copy of that new, those new assignments?
Sure, I'll send you the whole listing. And they're all for the, this, you know, two-year session of the council. So you'll know that there's a change in the Planning Development Committee, but also in the Budget and Finance Committee chairmanship. So take a look through that. If you have any questions or concerns, let me know. I did talk to Heather, something I'd like to circle back with her on, which is sort of a checking in, you know, every couple of weeks to just touch base about planning and development issues as we try to bring forward zoning changes, but also to talk about other areas that might be of concern, so.
That covered for you, Anne?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for updates or anything else?
I do have a question about, about floodplain zoning. And Andy, I don't know whether you know either the answers to either of these questions, but I'll try it. One is, have we, are our new floodplain maps adopted yet, or are they, are we still working on the older ones?
When you say the newer ones, we, we updated ours a couple of years ago, and one of the things I'd be looking at further in this year is updating that section once again. There's been some discussions recently, right, about the language updates?
Right, I actually, I have two questions. So the, the new FEMA maps, I remember there was a, there was a lot of controversy about them when they came out. Were they ultimately adopted?
Oh, yes, there, there, this was a couple of years back, yeah. Those were ultimately adopted here locally, and we did check in with, there's a state coordinator for that particular section that reaches out periodically. And so we will be updating that section again. It's nothing, I think, substantial right now, but certainly updating that section. There's been a little bit of chatter recently about.
That's what I was gonna ask you about, because it was unclear to me whether that update deadline applied only to the Cape Cod watershed or whether it applied to us as well. It was the last thing I saw.
Yeah, I'm.
Applied to Cape Cod.
Yeah, I'm confirming, but my understanding is it does not apply to us, that we are in good standing right now as far as our provisions. But, but that we will still want to update them to sort of follow some best practice language. So that's what I was expecting to deal with as part of, you know, maybe more of a housekeeping update later this year, but nothing of a substance of change per se, because there aren't, you know, say, new FEMA maps, for instance.
Thanks.
Anyone else? So I have another question. This is secondhand information. I should have looked it up first to know what I'm talking about, but I think it's pretty straightforward. I understand that there's been a change in state regulation for adoption of zoning amendments, that it now only requires a majority of the City Council to adopt zoning amendments. Is that true, Andy? And secondly, does our City Council have to decide to do it that way in order for it to become the way they operate here in, in town?
I don't believe there's anything unilateral right now that, unless, maybe there's something you're referring to that I'm not aware of, but I'm not aware that there has yet been passage by the legislature of an update to 48 that would allow, you know, which I think where you're describing, which is a civil majority vote. Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes. It's 48?
Yeah.
I believe, I believe it's the case that they, that the the threshold has changed for housing-related zoning changes.
Only for housing?
It's an attempt to encourage affordable housing. So I believe that that was enacted. It was, it was controversial, but I, I believe that the governor signed that.
But if, how would they determine? Or how could I learn more about this? How would they determine if legislation, say zoning, would affect affordable housing if it's sort of buried inside something we're doing because we know conceptually that it will support?
I can find, I'll find the regulation and distribute it.
Okay, that'd be great.
And one thing to note about Newbury Port compared to some other smaller towns, for instance, is we don't submit our zoning regulations when they're updated locally to the Attorney General's Office for review. So typically, if there's some dispute about something, you know, either a procedural matter in the adoption of it or something substantive, someone appealing or litigating something on the ordinance as applied or on its face. We typically would find out about that or see a dispute about that after adoption, as opposed to a part of the adoption process where, let's say, a small town would have their local ordinances reviewed by the Attorney General's Office. So at any rate, you know, we can discuss that further and take a look at that, but I think that ultimately speaking, there's, it's still gonna come down to a fair amount of support, if you will, from the council for zoning changes that might have to do with housing, particularly housing density. I guess, I know the 40-yard district was quite a bit of discussion around, you know, when that was being discussed. Waterfront West, obviously, has had several, you know, rounds of discussion and hasn't quite reached something that's compatible for the community yet. But I know that that, that housing density is usually the issue when we discuss the Port Plaza sort of, sorry, Ave area a couple of years back. With the marijuana zoning, there was discussion about that area as well and trying to allow some sort of, you know, village node or, you know, mixed-use development there, more walkable. That would require, again, another discussion about housing density or options as well. So that, I think, will always be the, the sticking point here. A new report is some debate about what type of density and where is acceptable.
But does that mean that, let's just take the one example you gave that we're, we all know about. When we revise the overlay district for Waterfront West, that will involve an issues around housing density. So does this automatically kick in in City Council? We only need a majority of City Council to adopt a revised Waterfront West zoning amendment?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I, I think that depends on the rest of the content of what's in that section. So, you know, if you're talking about just the housing component, maybe that's possible, but there are other pieces of Waterfront West that may go above and beyond that and may therefore still require, and this is something we can consult with KP on depending on where it falls, but it may still require the two-thirds vote because it's about more than just the one aspect of housing, for instance.
So I just have a summary of this. It says that one of the aspects of this is the economic development legislation, and it lowers the required vote from a two-thirds majority to a simple majority for zoning ordinances that allow multifamily housing or mixed-use development as of right in the downtown. So if that was the proposal, we wanted to change, if, if there was a zoning proposal to allow Waterfront West as of right in the downtown, that would only require a majority vote, but I don't think that's likely. I don't think anybody's gonna bring that vote forward.
Yeah, I would have to agree. And I think even the 40-yard district by the train station where there was an agreement that there needed to be some sort of change in that area. And I would hope that folks can agree that the buildings go up there will be beneficial to the, the transit element to that area. Even that, while it did become an as-of-right, if you will, zoning overlay, there's still, there were lots of design controls, you know, baked into that and the review of the Planning Board. So there were some mechanisms of, of control, and I think Rick is right, probably for Waterfront West, that's far less likely to be politically palatable here in Newbury Port. It's way too sensitive an area close to the downtown to, to not have, you know, multiple eyes looking at the, both the zoning and the development review process that would be undertaken. So I think it's highly unlikely that the council will be willing to adopt something that would result in as-of-right development scheme. Although it is possible, I think it's more likely to be something like we talked about before, like a special permit process. And then some manner of massing and design controls, some of the 40-yard district, but also more sensitive to the scale of the downtown.
So I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm just trying to find different examples so we can have this in our heads and know about it for the future. The 6C requires, has a, has a, you know, one piece of it has to do with affordable housing, but that's a minor part of it, right? The whole ish, well, I don't know how minor it is.
Yeah, it's.
Important, but it's not legislation focused primarily on increasing affordable housing, although it could do. Well, it won't increase affordable housing. It will only allow for contributions to the Affordable Housing Trust. So I guess that would, that could not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would pass muster for that threshold, but I, you know, just looking about the zoning map and the city of Newport's sort of ge, geography. It seems unlikely that there'd be, well, there's certainly benefits of doing so, and in the full case of the 40-yard district, I thought it made sense to allow, you know, an as-of-right permitting scheme that's expedited, but it follows certain design standards, obviously. But I think it's unlikely that, looking at other areas of the city, that to have something as-of-right, ultimately speaking, whether it's the 50-50 vote, you know, or two-thirds vote, ultimately comes down to local political support for a streamlined permitting process that doesn't give as much, quote, discretion to the Planning Board, or in this case, not the ZBA, to the Planning Board. And there might be some reluctance, I mean, in some cases for good reason, to take away the discretion that the board would have to determine whether a project is appropriate for a neighborhood or, and so forth, as opposed to just meeting design standards like the 40-yard district. Ultimately speaking, the Planning Board is obligated to approve projects provided they meet those standards and guidelines, unless they're otherwise waived by the board. But there's an expectation that projects that otherwise conform would be approved. And I think that they're looking at the other areas of the city. There's probably more sensitivity or concern about those areas. You know, for the downtown, I guess I'll say specifically, the downtown to allow multifamily as of right per se. It is definitely a possibility, and there's certainly benefits of doing so. But I think that I, I am proceeding under the assumption that that will continue to be a two-thirds vote. You know, for the downtown at least, and when you think about other, other areas of the city, there was even a vote several years back to Downzone, if you will, the R3 districts.
Okay, anybody else on any topic at all?
I actually have a quick question. I, I know that, Andy, there, there's work being done to update the zoning for Plum Island. Can you give a summary about that and how homeowners might be impacted in the years to come?
Yeah, well, that'll ultimately be up to the, the City Council with the input, obviously, the mayor and the City Council with the input of the Planning Board, obviously. What I am going to be suggesting the council do in the next couple of weeks, and we'll see where this goes, is rather than trying to do something we talked about in the rewrite, which is creating, turning the Plum Island overlay district into the underlying district, basically getting rid of the R3 district and the agricultural consolidation district that is over residential homes and just calling that Plum Island District. Rather than looking at structural change to it, basically just updating language in the ordinance that would make it more explicitly clear to the zoning board of appeals when they look at someone who wants to modify what's often out there, a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use. And, and it basically provides guidance to the ZBA to consider expansions, particularly those of bedrooms, additional square footage and so forth, as being potentially detrimental to the purposes of the Plum Island Overlay District, which are, in fact, if you go back and read them even today, are about stopping, you know, a problematic growth in the island. And so the idea there is to provide guidance for the ZBA to see it that way when they look at applications, rather than the current pattern, which even though the zoning makes it clear that that's the concern to be addressed on Plum Island, the current zoning allows and has, there's been quite a bit of permitting over the years for expansions on the island. So the amendment would essentially allow folks without, you know, any more complications really, to raise a structure up on pilings or, you know, add a small entryway, something like that. But not to add additional square footage on the island, not to add additional bedrooms. And so that's kind of the major idea there is if we are really gonna talk about, you know, seal the rise and sustainability and resiliency and so forth, and the sewer issues and the erosion that's happening right now, that we would basically at least agree that under zoning, again, this is what I would posit for the City Council, is change the zoning to at least acknowledge the fact that further growth in the island is, would be putting both public and private infrastructure in hazards way continually, and that, that pattern has continued in the last, you know, decade or two without really, you know, being cut back. And so this would basically do that is, the one thing that I would note about it is, rather than saying that those expansions are outright prohibited, I've gone the route of, the language I've put together basically says that the ZBA should come to the finding that those things are problematic for the district. And its purposes, and the reason for that is because under the zoning act state law under Massachusetts, and the case law related to that, there is a provision under state law of 48 that allows folks with single and two-family homes to come in for modifications to those structures, even though they're not conforming, they don't meet current zoning, to modify them further just by a special permit from the ZBA. And my concern there is just that rather than trying to create new case law and argue whether or not the, you know, the additional regulations can be imposed there beyond that structure, following that same structure and basically acknowledging the fact that folks can apply to. and basically acknowledging the fact that folks can apply to the ZBA for those expansions, that the ZBA should really, unless there's somebody who's talking about, you know, an accessway required for building accessibility codes or things like that, that really expansion should not be approved, that only raising of structures, you know, you know, same, same square footage replacements, things like that would be acceptable.
And when is this likely to come to a vote in council?
Well, that's up to the council. It would go in in February, but whether or not it comes out for a vote and when, that will be up to the plane board and its recommendation, the city council and its debate. I don't know how much debate there will be about that. To me, it seems pretty straightforward as a land use question. If you take everything else, you know, out and just look at that in a vacuum. But there obviously are implications for people who own property or developing property who want to further expand on the island. So that'll be a question for the council as to how long it takes to get from a proposal to something that's adopted.
The interesting thing is, is that in some ways that hurts the small, the person who owns just a tiny little cottage and wants to retain a tiny little cottage and that can't afford to build a whole new house up on the piers. It's an interesting dilemma.
Yeah, again, I, I am starting with my recommendation, just from the land use planning perspective, that irrespective of those one-off, you know, considerations that as a city, it's more problematic for the city to continue allow that growth, even though there may be individual cases why a property owner may benefit from, from having expansion rights.
I have a question. There is a floodplain overlay district. Is that correct? Just referenced. And the question is, is there a map that shows that overlay district? I don't see it on the existing zoning map.
Yeah, if you go to the MyMap page, the interactive version of the zoning. If you go, I don't know if you've used that before. It's kind of a simplified version of our GIS. On the city's website, if you go to the planning page and then go to the MyMap GIS, there should be a tab on the left side of one of our pages. Then what you'll see in there is there's a tab on the, the left side of the screen. Again, there's a little pulldown list where you can change the type of map you're looking at, the theme of the map. And what you would find there is there's a flood zones should be one of the pulldowns.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? So just for a heads up, I'm looking at our February 3rd meeting. We have that minor site plan review at 177 State Street. I believe that's that, that's the, the property that runs into Newbury, right?
Correct. And we had, we do have that peer review underway.
Okay, so that'll be on. And if we can possibly get our heads around enough of the material that everybody listed for planning priorities last meeting, I hope we can give you some idea of where we think we ought to put our energy and then we can get some feedback from you guys. So it'll be a little bit more on planning priorities next time, I hope. I don't want to overpromise and then we get tied up in knots and can't do anything for you, but we hope to have something, at least to give you a progress report with some content by, by the 3rd. So there's nothing else. We don't have to stay on. We could just adjourn. Anne, you want to have a motion? It's your favorite motion, isn't it?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, Alden.
Okay, and I'll take roll on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Bye.
Bye.